And we're back, moving into our second conversation for today. Another very important one, and as we said earlier in the show, we're really taking a look at some of the issues taking place within our society and just what we're hoping to do to help to change that. And the Belize City Council has taken up the initiative in being able to have a conference on domestic violence. It's called Break the Silence, Speak Up. We have at the sunset counselor Dr. Candy Spitz. She is the counselor responsible for foreign affairs, women and children, NGOs, and after-school programs. She's in the middle there. And of course, she has with her Amy Jex, who's a professional counselor, and Alyssa Carnegie, who is the vice president of Haven House, two of the presenters at the conference as well. Good morning, ladies, and thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Belize.
So, Dr. Pitts, let's just jump in as to why you decided to put this conference together? And obviously, you got the support you needed because it has come to fruition.
Yes. Well, as we all know, domestic violence has been increasing in rate and severity in our country. And importantly, what came to our understanding is that many of the people who find themselves in these abusive relationships or these toxic relationships, oftentimes, in spite of some of the structures that we have in place and some of the services that we have in place, oftentimes, they do not know their rights, their human rights, their civil rights. They do not know their recourse to the law. They do not know about some of the assistance that we have available for them. And importantly, they do not know their own self-power to exit some of these relationships alive. And so, all of the speakers at the conference will address some of these issues. As you have mentioned, we have Alyssa, who is the vice president of Haven House. She will speak about some of the services that that institution offers. We have with us Ms. Amy Jex, who will speak about some of the assistance that counselors and therapists can offer some of these victims. We have the Commissioner of Police and the officer in charge of the domestic violence unit at the police department, who will speak about that process when a victim or when there's a report of domestic violence, how that process is handled from the police standpoint and whether or not there are any limitations that maybe they need to address. We have the principal of St. Catherine's Academy. I'm hoping I'm not missing out. I'm sure I'm missing out on many people.
I'm sure we have the flyer where some of that will come up. But just in terms of selecting who you wanted to present, you've obviously tried to cover as many different aspects.
Right.
But what is the goal? What do you want people? I mean, is it just to come and feel enlightened? Is it for specifically persons who are within violent relationships to come and get the tools? Who are you aiming to target?
Well, it's open to the general public. And as I've mentioned, many people do not know about the services, about the refuge that is out there for them. And so, we want these speakers to help educate them, to help inform them, and also, well, to help empower survivors of domestic violence, victims of domestic violence, and those, all of the people who are affected by domestic violence. So, it's really to inform, to educate, to empower, and to allow people to recommit themselves to the advocacy against domestic violence.
This is a wonderful initiative, and I think you've put it together masterfully. And the Commissioner of Police, some of the names that you see, that I see up there in terms of getting together. The person who, there's a very small probability that somebody, that the majority of people who are in violent relationships will be attending. It's very small. How do you plan to reach those people? Because they won't be in attendance. Will it be live-streamed? Is the hope that you want somebody to identify those people and then go and reach out to them? What is the hope to reach the constituents, the people who directly need this sort of initiative?
Well, as I've said, we extended the invitation to the general public, and we also sent special invitations to all of the high schools, to all of the junior colleges, to all of the standard leaders and area reps of the city, encouraging them to encourage their residents to attend the conference. And we are hoping that, you know, that I think that we can't necessarily go and say, "You are being abused. You need to be at this conference." We can just open it generally.
But maybe I can bring that question to both Alyssa and Amy. I think one of the greatest misconceptions people have is that there is a stereotypical demographic of who is a victim of domestic violence.
That was something I really wanted to address. Yeah. As the only man here, you misspoke with that generally. It's a very difficult thing for us to say who is in a violent relationship versus who is not in a violent relationship. We don't know what happens behind closed doors. You can be in one, and you're not speaking up. One of the things that we want to do here, remember the name is Break the Silence, Speak Up. So, we are adding on to this as an education campaign. It's not a one-time thing. We need to start speaking about what violence against partners is, what domestic violence is, what dating violence is. Have you ever heard of dating violence? Do you know it happens? We don't speak about these things, but domestic violence doesn't start at that level. It starts with microaggressions. Do you feel good in your relationship? Do you feel respected in your relationship? Do you feel honored in your relationship? And if we can start the conversation here, we take it away, not necessarily away from women and children, but we talk about it at the community level. Are men abused? Are men victims of verbal aggression, of physical aggression? Yes, it happens. How many men speak about it? Of the men who will be attending our conference, how do we know which ones are victims or which ones are not? And remember, we are talking about domestic violence, which not only is between, within a marriage, it extends to children as well. We have to remember that children see, they do what they see. So, if they see violence in the home, that's what they learn. And so, when we look at a relationship between a third former and a fourth former, and they are dating, is that a respectful relationship? Are both of them feeling respected? Do they both have their dignity within that relationship? Or does one person come away having lower self-esteem? So, when we look at that, this is more of an education, starting to speak up. Let us learn to identify what these things are.
Yeah, I would have to say identification is really important. I think a lot of people don't even recognize the signs when it first starts, to be honest. You know, you're in a relationship, and some people feel like, "Oh, it just happened. You know, I got hit the first time." They said, "Sorry," and it won't happen again. And then, "Oh, my gosh, it happens again." You know, and so, looking for things, and what does a healthy relationship consist of? Or what does that comprise of? What does that mean? But also, understanding, you know, what are some of the symptoms? And looking out for things. So, people are aware that before it necessarily escalates to a point where, you know, it's life-threatening and you really need to seek out, I guess, the support services of someplace like the Haven House, you know, that you can look for that and, you know, see if you can take steps and know what, I guess, recourse you have access to throughout your time.
I fully understand that there are two aspects of it. There's the preventative aspect, but there's also the current situation.
Yes.
It's very unlikely that somebody who is beating their husband or wife is going to send them to a conference on domestic violence. And so, that surely is a constituent that would need different ways to reach them than somebody who is looking at examining their current relationship. But...
But can I just stop there? We can't leave that out there. Anybody, I could sit here right now and be able to attend. Because when we keep on saying that, we allow people to feel that they can't access help. So, any person can be a victim of domestic violence from emotional, physical, financial, sexual abuse.
Exactly. And I think even through this, Marlene, I'm really glad you interjected. Yeah, is that even in terms of the conference itself, you know, it's not just a conference. I mean, even being here on the couch, talking about it, and maybe having a housewife being tuned into, oh, yeah, right now, listening to it and understanding that she's not alone, you know, that there are, you know, people who are talking about this issue and that raising awareness, albeit small, but at least a seed gets planted. If it's that in media coverage, and this is why it's so important as a community that we talk about issues like this. And I think this is why, in terms of looking at the conference, it's not the conference in and of itself. I think it's like, you know, a starting point or a catalyst. But really looking at how that's expanded. Because like I, I mean, like we were all saying, domestic violence has no face in terms of no, no one person. So, it's not something that we can say, you know, it affects one community. I'll tell you, for Haven House specifically, I mean, it's one of, it's not the only one, but it's the primary one. I think there's one of two. I think there's another one in Cairo. But the Haven House was established in 1993, primarily with a Belize City audience in mind. We have people who access the shelter and its services, emergency accommodation, from all over the country, from Curazol to Toledo, not just Belize City, as an indication of people who are in these situations and need access to support and to services. We would have no idea necessarily where they are from, how they live, what they look like, but they're in that scenario. And I think, you know, having these types of activities and this type of conversation helps to show people that there are support services out there for you, that they are people who care, that there are people who are interested, and that you're not alone in this. And I think that's really important.
And you know, another, one of the problems that we face as a society is that we wait until a child is beaten mercilessly or a woman is beaten within inches of her life or until a man is killed for us to get in the public and start lamenting and start grieving. This conference is a way of keeping this very critical concern at the forefront of our social and political consciousness. At the very end of the conference, we are asking everyone in attendance to sign what we have defined as the Swift Hall Declaration. And it's really calling those who have not committed as yet to commit themselves, or those who have committed themselves to recommit themselves to the advocacy against domestic violence to ensure that they, within their own space or within the offices that they hold, will take action and will help us as a society to either reduce these incidents or to really put an end to domestic violence.
Now, there's so much, and we were talking to the family court about the protection order and some of the mechanisms there. The courage that it takes for any person to say, "I am in," just at the start, "an unhealthy relationship. I'm being controlled. I have to, you know, report on every single behavior that I have. I'm interrogated the moment I walk through the door, maybe bodily checked, who knows?" We've heard some of the worst stories of what people do in relationships. And I wanted to bring that in because you said it earlier, Alyssa, it doesn't start with being killed. It starts long before that. How important is it for us to have people understand that there are parameters as to what your partner can and cannot do outside of physical and sexual abuse, just in how much they control you?
This is what this conversation is for, to start talking about what a healthy relationship, to start a relationship is, to start talking about what we expect in a good relationship. We can't really just start and say no to domestic violence because when we think of that, that's exactly what we think. We think of battering, physical abuse, sexual abuse. We are now starting to talk about the verbal and emotional abuse and the financial abuse that follows behind it. If you don't know that you are being financially abused, you have no reason to walk away from it. Some of us grow up, like I said, we model behavior. If our parents were abusive to each other, and that's what we know, that's what we learn to expect, it may not make us feel good, but that's what we learn a relationship is. So, this is changing the conversation. This is empowering people to question their relationship, allowing them to wonder, "Is this good for me? Is this healthy for my children? Is this what I want the people in my life to experience?" One of the, I've been reviewing some papers and things recently since my invitation to the conference. And one of the questions that come up very often is, as a parent, do you want your child to be like you or to have the same experience that you had? And that's a question that you ask yourself to, you know, "If I don't like my behavior, is it healthy for the people who are watching me?" And we have to realize that as a society, as a community, I think you mentioned it early, earlier, is there a duty to report? What do we call in? We hear it all the time at the corner downstairs next door. We hear the abuse, we hear the screaming, we hear the emotional trauma. We see how the people walk out with, you know, with little dignity. And we see these things, but what do we do? And this is what, this is, this conference is asking us to talk about these things, to raise awareness, so that even if you cannot attend tomorrow afternoon, maybe you heard about it, and you can look into it. Now, almost everybody has access to Facebook or other social media. And we have this information here. This segment will be on Facebook, will be on YouTube for a while, and people can access these conversations. They can look into it, and they can find a little bit more empowerment. They can find out, "Am I okay in my relationship? Or do I feel there is something off?"
Now, the theory is one thing, and the books are one thing, and the papers are one thing. But the details and the real-life experience of somebody who is trying to get out of these relationships is a different thing. I've had my own experiences with family members who have tried, even in terms of accessing
Absolutely.
the courts or Haven House. Because mentally, unfortunately, one of the major things is comfort. They already used the relationship. As bad as, as bad as it is, the beating, the insults, whatever it is, I'm already used to this. And so, how do you move people from the theory that you read in your books to the reality of, "Listen, you might report to the police. They're gonna laugh at you. He's still gonna beat you. You're gonna need the money after four days. You're gonna miss your kids, you're gonna miss your house. You're in this little room in a stranger's house." How do you move them to say, "Listen, this is for the greater good"?
And I think that is why we have speakers from all of these different official offices, right? We have representatives from the Women's Department, representatives from the Women's Commission, from Haven House. We have the Commissioner of Police. We have the officer in charge of the domestic violence unit. So, they will be able to speak about that process, you know, the practical process of faking them from being victimized or being abused to understanding that you have these services available to you.
That's, that's one of the things I would really like to touch on because I think one of the important determinants for, I think, women who are in situations like this, especially where kids are involved, is this idea of, "Where do I go? Is there somewhere safe?"
How do I sustain myself?
Yeah, exactly. I won't have a place to go, especially when I think some of them, many of them feel like they've worn out their welcome from many friends and family. Because I mean, we've had incidents that are very high-profile on the media where, that have resulted in the loss of their lives, where, you know, they were looking for bus fare to be able to escape the situation, and no one was willing to help because it's not the first time she's asked for it or she was asking for it. It's not the first time she's been in this situation and tried to leave. But understanding this, the idea, the cycle of abuse and what that is and how you can better support people and persons in those situations, but also knowing too that there is a place to go because Haven House is undisclosed for a reason, for safety reasons.
It's a safety house.
It's a safety house. But I will say that it is not, I don't want sound appealing because it really is for emergency accommodation services for women and children who really need it. But it is very comfortable. We have a house mother who is there who prepares warm meals for people who are there. We have books and toys and things for kids. But we also provide services, meaning that our shelter coordinator, an amazing person, really, really goes above and beyond in terms of helping people who are at the shelter access counseling, access legal services, drives them to and from places. So, even when, when we fundraise, and we were having this discussion before, a lot of what we fundraise for is to be able to provide directly to those persons these types of services. But I think also reassuring people that they understand that there is somewhere to go, even if they feel like, "My brother, my sister, my aunt, my cousin, my neighbor, no one wants to take me in again because I've done this before. I've, you know, I've, you know, they don't wanna do this. There is a place for you to go."
Or that my abuser will find me.
Yeah, and that's a secure place.
The statistics related to domestic abuse is, Alyssa mentioned, the cycle of violence and the cycle of abuse. And it actually follows that majority of murders follow when women walk out or when partners walk out. That's when the violence escalates to a point.
What's the exact figure?
I don't have the exact figure, but it's really high. It's actually of the people who walk, well, it depends on where you're looking at data. The ones I found were in the U.S., though it may not apply. But it's almost about 40%.
In the U.S.
Uh-huh. And so, when we, when we look at empowering people, we know that there is a danger. But in order to get from this theoretical point of view to a practical point of view, where we need to start is by education, empowering, teaching people that there are options. And then, when they do decide that this is not the relationship for me or this is not what I want, then they have options. Whereas, if we don't talk about it, if we are in a silent community, if we don't offer support, what happens is it just gets perpetuated, and future generations will see it, and they will see it as normal, just like we grew up seeing some of these things as normal. And so, when we speak about these things, when we come on media, when we have conferences, when we talk to our neighbor about it, we start this conversation, and it is something that you are right. A lot of this happens on college campuses. A lot of these conversations happen in, with older people, with people who are more, you know, in a certain demographic. So, we need to start extending it to the community. Maybe they will not be able to attend Swift Hall tomorrow. Maybe they can. The invitation is here. And so, we want to just continue talking and continue, like Dr. Pitts said, keep it at the forefront.
No, domestic violence is not the problem. It is proof that there is a problem. Because as I understand it, it's based on inequity. There is some sort of inequity, or probably something that's...
I think power dynamics within
It's power.
relationships, yeah.
And in certain cases, it's sometimes a mental disorder.
I mean, sometimes, I mean, each case you want to, different. I would hate to paint everything with a broad stroke. But I will say that, I mean, just to go back a little bit to your point, even with Haven House and the thousands of women that we've seen, and I can only speak to that, 75% of persons who access the shelter and legal services and support services do return. And it really does come back to this idea of power. A lot of the entrenched, I think, feelings and the control that has happened and conditioning that has happened over the years because a lot of, I mean, a lot of, I mean, not only is it that sons and daughters, I mean, they model behavior, both in terms of being able to perpetuate a certain type of behavior, but also seeing, you know, I've seen my mother endure it. So, they come up with this idea that I have, this is what it's normal, this is what I'm supposed to do, this is what I'm supposed to tolerate. So, how do you work against years of conditioning, your upbringing and all of that? It's not easy. The cases though, and this is important, that they are success cases, that there are people who have, you know, transitioned, who have moved on, who have, who are alive, you know, and are thriving and are working and are okay. And in many of those cases, actually, most of those cases, a lot of what has been very critical and instrumental is the support of the family, friends, and the community in being able to transition beyond that. And that's where I think we have a really big opportunity. I mean, you know, not only looking under the lens of a conference, but through, again, I say these conversations because it's really important to understand that everyone has a role. You know, if you see it, you know, if you hear it, if you, if you understand it. Because, you know, Belize is small, degrees of separation. You know, we will see someone, we have heard of something, we have heard of someone. But understanding that it is possible, you know, you have, there's hope. There really is, you know, and there are. It's difficult and it's tough, but there are people who are willing to work with you through this. And not once, not twice, but throughout your process. And, and those are the things that we'd really like to showcase.
And there is a level of education, you know. You keep on using the terminology, and it's one that escapes us very often when we see domestic violence issues, and that's cycle.
Yeah.
It takes multiple times. I think we had somebody here who said seven, at least seven times of leaving, going back, leaving, going back. But for an outsider, you know, if it's my neighbor, if it's my, well, maybe not my sister, but you know, if it's a friend, and I just feel like I've said something, reported it, did everything multiple times, it's the fifth time, and she or he went back again, I'm done. But what is the message that you give to people? Because really, what you need are advocates. A victim who's being abused is a shell of a person sometimes. They don't have the strength to fight for themselves.
Right, which is why the term is battered woman syndrome. It's a syndrome, right? It is, it's a psychological and emotional kind of struggle, right? Something that is not really easy for someone to overcome. And so, what that requires of, the people are wrong, is patience, you know, patience. So, after the seventh time, let it be an eighth time, let it be a ninth time or a tenth time. It is important to communicate to the victims that they have people, they have a support system. Otherwise, it will just succumb to the victimization, and oftentimes, it costs them their lives. So, I think that it may become wear-some on the people around them, but we always have to extend patience with them as they work through that process.
I am curious. There has been a move to sort of encourage civil society partners to work along with governmental agencies to try to tackle different problems, whether it's environmental or business or otherwise. I remember in the past, there was this organization called Women Against Violence. I think Ms. Bowman was the head of it, and it was, to my mind, very effective. I don't know if it's still in existence. And has there been other NGOs who are specifically looking at the issue of domestic violence? And what are they, so that people can access these NGOs?
Well, I think a lot of, I mean, there are many, there are multiple. I couldn't go through, go through them all. But I will say that a lot of people Well, a lot of people are looking at, I mean, besides like Women's Department, which is governmental, I think
You have WIN, which is the network of all of them.
Yes, all of them. Gender-based violence generally is a conversation that is happening. I mean, the Special Envoy's Office as well. I mean, we have NCFC. We have all these different organizations who are working, Ministry of Human Development. But we're looking at things also from a policy level because we understand too that a lot of recourse is through legal means, the law, the way things are designed and the way things are set up. But I will say though, I really wanted to thank you for bringing up that point because there is, especially in this area, I think, such a movement in terms of bringing together civil society, bringing together, and government, especially working in tandem to really try to address these issues because they recognize that resources are very needed, human, financial, technical. And the only way to really work on it is to come at it holistically. And, you know, I think it's commendable, and, you know, there are more things that need to be done. But I think we're in the right direction.
Now, you said that Haven House is one or two shelters?
I believe so.
In the country? How many families do you accommodate at one time?
It depends on the size of the family and the amount of people. We've, we accommodate, let's see, I would say about, about 10 persons, 12 persons.
Okay.
Yeah. It really depends because if it's kids, if it's what the dynamic is like.
No, I understand that. Because what I've always thought, I mean, much like prisoners need halfway houses, somebody who comes out of an abusive relationship, they need somewhere. And when we only have two institutions that can offer that, it means that that is perhaps one of our greatest needs that we haven't been able to tap into. How is your fundraising source? Are people supportive?
People, actually, I will say that our board has been absolutely terrific. We have been, I think, over, I mean, many of them have been with the, with the Haven House for, I think, about 10 years. But just in terms of commitment to this issue and commitment to the Haven House, to the shelter, we have recently stepped up our fundraising efforts. We're trying to do a more outreach, trying to make people aware that this facility exists because we understand that even though we can offer a limited amount of support, but there is support. And there are moments when, you know, there is no one in the shelter, and it's not that someone isn't being abused or experiencing domestic violence at home. It's maybe that they don't know that this, yeah, that this exists. I mean, it does work by referral, so you do have to be in touch with the Women's Department or with the police, especially a domestic violence unit. And they will refer you and set you up in the house because there are things, you know, many times, domestic violence situations, you're, you are in a violent scenario when you're looking to leave. And so, it does require that type of intervention Um, and so it does require that type of intervention, um, and because we need to keep the place secure. But in terms of fundraising efforts, we've, I guess, because we've tried to be more, we've tried to push more um, and really trying to build visibility, we're getting a lot of great support. Um, we have small fundraisers, things like, you know, Bingo Night, um, with that, you know, support. Um, and to larger things that we're starting to do, um, we have this five K color run that we've just recently started. Um, we did it last year for, it was the second year and now we're doing it again. Uh, actually Candice and I met through that. Um, and what we've seen is a great amount of organizations and corporations, companies like BTL, BL, um, come out with their staff, actually buying shirts for their staff, um, to come out, bringing their banners, showcasing, um, that they are, you know, where they stand on this issue. And I think also showcasing to their own employees that, you know, that we have a company culture that we support. I would say so. Um, I would say so, obviously because there is a need. But I also, my caution would be also in terms of being very strategic about it because it does require a lot of resources. Um, trained people, you know, facility, I mean, for us even at the shelter, I mean, we're fundraising, or I guess the one that most people are aware of, but we struggle. We're, we're trying to get more funds for the, for the building. We, I mean, we are fallen victim to, to burglaries and all kinds of things too that we have to try to like respond to. Um, so it does require an effort and sustained commitment. It can't be one of those things where it's like, this is a great idea, I'm gonna put it up and, you know, tell everyone that, yeah, I'm, kudos, I set this thing up. It requires real work, commitment and, and support.
In terms of what can be done, because there, you, you tend to, well, for the Belize city-centric people, you tend to look at these problems, um, in a way that you can, if you can get out on the street, you're gonna be okay. But abuse happens everywhere. It might be in a village where the police officer is in maskal and you're in, uh, lucky strike. And, and so to be able to get help in the wee hours of the morning, if that's the case, on a Sunday, you might have a problem. What can they, what can the community do in terms of, is there a move to? Let's say I want to volunteer and I have an apartment. And I say, listen, I come to Haven House and I say, if you have a problem, you can train me, I go to seminars. And if you have a problem, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, I have a safe place here.
Advocacy.
And, and I'm able to chip in because I, as part of the community, need to get this thing to stop.
Yes.
Is, is that a possibility, an option as yet?
I, I don't know that it's an option that exists right now, but that definitely is a possibility. And that's the type of like amazing, you know, ideas and work that we hope to like generate and see if we can, can sustain. Because I will say, I mean, um, even just the shelter experiences, the adults that we've seen have been like eighteen, so I think just under sixty years old that have accessed it. But our youngest child who has come has been three days old. So when you're looking, yes, three days old, meaning like a woman who has just recently given birth to her baby, has to access emergency accommodation services and many times not with just one kid, with men, with different. So we have, um, we are prepared to be able to, um, have milk, have baby clothes, have diapers because sometimes they leave with nothing, many times they leave with nothing. Um, and so, you know, when we look for support or fundraising goes directly into providing those types of services to, um, our clients. Um, but definitely I think ideas like yours are important, but there are other considerations that I think also have to be, you know, taken into account. And I think that's, that's good though, and I think that's the conversation and it's getting started and, you know, how to move from there.
And Dr. Pitts, this is, I, I guess, a part of what, uh, the aim is, to see how we can learn to be a assistance to other people. Whether it's helping out Haven House, taking in someone, you know, being patient with a family member who hasn't left yet. Uh, with the lineup, you also have the police department. Talk about what, what you hope, uh, the commissioner will bring to the conversation especially.
Um, as I've mentioned, I'm hoping that both the commissioner and the officer in charge of the domestic violence unit
Yeah.
will speak about that process, right? Because it, it seems a little, um, mysterious to many. Um, because obviously there, there, if, if the incidents continue to reason, uh, to increase, then there is a breakdown somewhere. And so we're hoping that, um, both of them will speak about that process, speak about, um, what is done when there is a report about an incident, you know, of domestic abuse? Um, how does the police respond? And, um, what else needs to be done? Or should there be, um, any changes to, to, to that process? I'm hoping that they will speak, um, to that topic, yeah.
One of the, one of the things I thought I heard, um, the commissioner say was that one of the new approaches to, uh, complaints is that they will no longer allow persons to simply at the police station, say that they don't want any action.
Crime and charges, yeah.
That now they have to go to the court and tell the court that that is the position. Do you think that that would be helpful in terms of helping to stem the incidences?
I, that's, I mean, uh, yeah, it's a little bit, yeah, case by case, and I think a little, yeah. A case by case and, yeah.
One of the things that you have to consider is that sometimes people walk away because they have to, not because they want to. And so maybe that could provide a little bit of a buffer to really think about what you want rather than drop the case and go back immediately. So that's a little bit of time to think about maybe, yes, this is the right step that I want.
Or to access places like Haven House in between, yeah.
Because we do have, I mean, we do have a, a time period, I think twenty-one days, where you can stay at the shelter before you have to. Well, we, we look to relocate and transition and we work with persons to really get them settled.